I am recording on one platform. I am recording on a second platform.
There you are, Mike.
And you guys can get underway as you see fit.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Board of Health meetings meeting for from March 31st, 2020. Please direct your attention to Vice Chairman Ryan for a pledge of allegiance. Larry, can you lead us?
Pledge allegiance, flag.
The United States of America and the Republic. Thank you. I know that was a little bit challenging than it usually is with this type of meeting. I'm also going to ask that everybody just bow your heads and take a moment of silence for those that are currently sick with COVID-19 virus, as well as those that have passed away from the COVID-19. And for all those families that have put on hold the grieving process throughout this this terrible disease. All right, just a quick moment of silence. Thank you. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video or on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. So obviously, we have a lot of stuff going on on the agenda tonight. Under community announcements, Doug, anything?
No, essentially, this whole agenda is really a community announcement for the pandemic, so I don't have anything other than that.
Fair enough. Okay, we're going to pass over the minutes. We'll table those for the next meeting. Under new business, coronavirus, COVID-19 update, Mr. Lab.
So if it's okay with you, Mike, I thought we would go in order of what's published in the in the agenda. And before I turn it over to our health agent, Del Shawn, I just want to say just broadly how proud I am of everybody that I'm working with. All the town staff, from the department heads down to every junior-level clerk, has been stepping up and rising to the occasion, and everyone's adapting and working very hard to keep their staff safe, the public safe, and try to keep services rolling as best we can. So I just want to acknowledge everybody from the outset and how hard everyone's working and how proud I am and honored to be working with all of them. So with that, I'd like to start, if it's okay with with Deli, so she can kind of give an overview from a health perspective, and then we'll run down from there.
Okay, Deli, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank Doug and Jen for their leadership during this difficult time, and especially thankful for the fire chief, Chief Duffy, and Chief Llewellyn for their assistance through this difficult time. The Public Health Department promotes and protects the health and wellness of the community and performs core functions of public health assessment, assurance, and surveillance under the guidance of the Rockland Board of Health. The Rockland Board of Health urges the Rockland community to follow orders and guidance set by Governor Baker. To date, we closed restaurants on March 17th to provide only takeout or delivery. On March 19th, we closed all here, our personal care facilities, nail salons, beauty parlors, massage parlors, salons, all gyms, and daycares, except for the ones that are exempt for first responder families and medical care services. And at this time, the only daycare facility that meets those requirements is Dove's Nest. They've been in constant contact with me, and I'm thankful for them, too, to be able to provide our first responders and medical professionals a place for their children to go. Our parks and playgrounds also have been closed. On on March 20th, information was provided to the Board of Health to for funds, emergency funds regarding, from our Region 5 HMCC, regarding available funds. So I participated in that survey and was granted $7,000 to use towards public health nurses, surveillance, and inquiries that come daily. I've also been in touch with Republic, and they say that trash is just going to continue being picked up, recycling and trash. We've been a little lenient with people that have missed pickups because I know this is all new. So I am, depending on the issue of why they weren't serviced, I will be sending out the truck to go back and pick up especially trash, household trash. I am aware that during this difficult time, our trash just tonnage is going to go up because people are home. So most people can't wait a week normally, and with this, with everybody being home, so there's certain situations that I am sending the truck back to pick up. I've been in and out of the office on a day-to-day with. I'm sorry, I just lost my space in my little notes. So I, my recycling attendants have been switching on and off, letting vendors in to empty containers that are full now from when we closed on the 19th. So they're they're doing their share, they're making sure that the ALO battery is up and running in the event that there is illegal disposing. Republic has stopped all bulky pickups. So I know that I had stated before in the spring that that's what I would like to do again, something similar to what we did in the fall. However, that does not look like it's going to happen unless I reach out to another vendor. I've been, like I said, been in the office, making sure that the bills are being entered, receipts, following up on complaints, McDonald's, Dunkin' Donuts, Social Rehab, Home Depot, and many areas, and everybody is in full cooperation. And to to date, the official count as of 3:30 today, we have nine confirmed cases in our in our community. And that's it, unless anybody else has any questions.
Okay, thank you, Deli. Mr. Ryan?
I'm early all set. Went through all the stuff. It's only the day by. That's all we can do. We have to just follow with the guidelines of the state and the federal people of, you know.
Right, and then today's latest extension on the band is saying till May 4th.
Right, so that would be schools and everything.
That's everything.
Right, so.
It's going to be a hard hit for our community with people, with all of our nail salons and our food establishments. It's definitely going to be a hard hit for some of those businesses.
One of the, I was talking to David DeCoste about House Bill 4, 5, and 8, Section 12 allowed for takeouts and things like that, but they're also allowed to take out alcohol, closed alcohol beverages, you know, where they went to the bin, you get your dinner and half a dozen beers or to give a certain amount, I guess, according to the bill I read today. But I asked David if that was already approved, and he said it was, but it was, I think it's somewhere in the Senate now. People have asked me about that because half the business that runs through sale of alcohol is that the alcohol itself. I mean, I know it's cheaper to go to a package store, but if you can go down and get your dinner and a couple of beers, too, it might be one of the things we can consider allowing if it's if it's, well, we expect, so if it works out with John Llewellyn and everybody, actually. I mean, I'm sure you probably, you know, don't want it. I'm just saying, you know, you go down to the package store, they're still open. So a guy has to go to the liquor store to get his liquor, then he got to go to the to the other store to get his dinner. You know, again, it's more contact, but it's, you know, it's a big catch 22, you know what I mean? Where do you, where do you draw?
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Mullen?
Oh, just a quick question out there, Deli, like, would you be able to update us on the status of the parks and playgrounds also, or as it results, oh, you know, to this crisis on parks, are open, are they open for passive use? And what about the playgrounds?
All parks and playgrounds have been restricted as well. I know I did receive a call this morning regarding the playground over at French's Crossing. So I will be following up on that tomorrow. Parks and playgrounds are closed.
All right, thank you, Deli, and thank you for all your work.
The real trail's open.
Huh?
The real trail's open.
Yes, it is. I was on it this weekend. It was amazing, so thank you, Deli, for everything.
Carol, anything?
Oh, thank you for the update, Deli.
You're welcome.
Rich?
Mike, no, I have no questions at this time. Thanks.
Wow, that's great.
Okay, thank you, Deli, just, could you just very quickly, you know, there's been some some questions directed to me from some of the residents about reporting of of COVID-19 cases within the town of Rockland and what the residents have felt have been the responsibility or what they feel is the responsibility of town to inform them. Can you just set the record straight as to what with the governor's direction on that is as far as privacy and HIPAA laws go?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's, again, it changes day by day, but we have to keep in mind everybody's right to privacy. And and so they've been providing me with just addresses of the positive cases, and then I buy that to Chief Duffy, and then he informs the dispatch. So when so when they go out, dispatch knows and they inform the first responders. And it's and it's it's really a fine line because you don't really want to cross. Everybody has their right to privacy, although the community wants to know, too. So that information is provided, although there's been a lot of false positives, people stating that they have been confirmed positive. And then when I go back and check with our public health nurse, it's it's not true. So there's a lot of misconceptions going on and a lot of people saying that they're positive, and and then it just makes more work for everybody else that has to make sure that these people state that they're positive. So if somebody calls me and says they're positive, I get their address, and then I I send it over to our Social VNA, and they tell me what they confirm or deny the reports. And most of the times when I'm reaching out to them, it's not a positive case.
Okay, thank you, Deli. Deli, appreciate the update. It's fair to say you've had a very interesting first year on the job. I appreciate all your help.
I know. I say that to Doug all the time.
Yeah. I know, you and Doug are neck and neck. I don't know who said it. So thank you, Deli. Thanks for the update. Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, next.
Anytime you guys have questions, you can reach out to me directly. I will answer any questions.
Sounds great. Thank you, Deli. Next on the agenda, Chief Llewellyn, just a quick update from the Rockland Police Department, what you guys have seen and what you guys are dealing with as it pertains to COVID-19 virus.
Okay, first of all, I just want to thank Chief Duffy. He's been the central location for gathering supplies, getting us masks, gloves, protective equipment. So, you know, I know we all say it offline and stuff like that, but he deserves the public acknowledgement as well, and he's doing a great job with it. So thank you, chief. Also, Dr. Cron, we reached out to Dr. Cron. He supplied us with some wipes and things we need to keep the cars, the cruisers clean. As you can imagine, we've got a lot of people working their equipment in and out of the station. We go to calls, excuse me. We need to keep everything clean, and that's going to be the key to keeping our offices healthy and safe. So Deputy Chief Aramo's been doing a great job reaching out, and really, he is the the radar of the Rockland Police Department that he can secure almost anything at any time. So he's been doing a great job. As far as the department goes, we've had one officer out sick for about a week, but he's been out sick with a case of strep throat, not a not a COVID issue. We expected him back tonight at some point. Other than that, we are doing extremely well. We have basically shut down the building to all outsiders. That includes family members, friends, anybody, unless you're a full-time employee of the Rockland Police Department, you're not getting in unless you're under arrest, so. And just so the public knows, even the arrest procedures are really strange nowadays. If you're arrested, you will be arraigned and then bailed directly from the police station. We're not even transporting them down to court anymore. That's all being done over the phone with the judge nowadays. So we're living in some really strange times.
Yeah.
As of today, as you can imagine, this is a moving target. We're changing things all the time. We're trying to reduce the number of people in the building. As of today, my detectives are working from home. We've gone through a very detailed process of getting it to work from home. We've been able to get two of our specialists, which our officers were not signed to a patrol shift. They're coming in at 8 o'clock in the morning. They're taking one of the auxiliary cruisers and returning home. They're responding to calls from their house. So we've been just trying to do a really good job of keeping people out so we can keep people healthy. The custodian, Rich Welch, has been doing a great job. We have him coming in at night as well and on the weekends. A lot of that is to keep the place clean, but it's also to give the people on the night shifts peace of mind that we're not just cleaning the building during the day, Monday through Friday. So he's been doing an amazing job for us as well. You know what? Our calls for service are down, which is a good thing. One of the things that scares me a little bit, if we do start, Bill, with takeout alcohol, it might make it a little easier to drink and drive as opposed to going to the package store and heading home. So personally, and more so professionally, I would oppose that because I think it's important. We're not having as many drunk driving issues right now because the bars are closed. So that has had a positive impact on the community. And basically, myself, the deputy chief, the lieutenant, we're on conference calls as Zoom, almost all day, trying to stay ahead of this, trying to stay up with best practices to keep the department running as efficiently and safely as we can. So happy to entertain any questions, but it's an ever-moving target. I can assure you that.
Absolutely. Thank you, chief. Mr. Mullen, any questions?
No, I don't have a, I don't have anything, chief. Thank you for your efforts and all of the efforts of your entire department.
Thank you.
Ms. Nyman?
I'm good. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Karen.
Mr. Penny?
No questions at this time. Thanks, guys.
Okay, and Mr. Ryan?
John, do you see people conforming to the spacing rules and all that other stuff around town?
You know, yes and no. I think Deli hit on a really good point yesterday. I know she had some trouble up at Home Depot. I had gone up there after she had called and noticed that the whole social distancing thing is, some people believe in it, some aren't. We we did have a problem at one of the pouring establishments in town, probably a week or so into it. We notified Deli. Took care of it. We did a report, sent it off to her. That has since stopped. And we do regular building checks around town, and we don't seem to be having any any real trouble right now, so it's a good thing. People are complying.
All right, thank you, chief. I appreciate you had to work and keep keep yourself and everybody else safe out there.
Trying, thank you.
All right, before we move on, I just want to go back to Deli for one second. She texted me real quick. Deli, I can't hear you.
What are you doing?
So I just wanted to add real quick that chief just reminded me of all the nail salons that reached out and donated surgical masks, which is which is unbelievable. And today we got dropped off some N95s and some, two packs of protective gear. So it's it's nice to see that the community's out there reaching out to our first responders.
Thank you, Deli. All right, next on the agenda, we're moving on, Chief Duffy.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I have to echo what, you know, Deli and Chief Llewellyn have stated already is that, you know, the departments are just working hand-in-hand with each other over this situation, making sure that everybody's got the equipment they need and really just trying to work things out in this ever-changing environment. We are currently, on a day-to-day basis, changing how we operate at the Rockland Fire Department. Like the police department, we are, our building is locked down, no visitors are allowed into the station, deliveries being made outside and we're bringing them in. We're doing everything that we can to protect the firefighters so that, you know, they'll be able to respond to the calls when needed. We currently have, we currently have probably one or two responses each day to a person under investigation. You know, we've had very, very sick people in the case of public responses in the past week. We think that the the numbers that Deli are reporting are going to to increase, especially when when testing becomes more prevalent and more available here. For for protective gear and for masks, gloves, face shields, we're in an okay situation. If we, if if the numbers start to rise, you know, any, anything like they are in New York City, you know, extrapolated down to our level, I think we're going to be in trouble in a couple of weeks. You know, huge shout out to the residents, the the companies in Rockland that have all donated gear. The high school has donated masks, or I should say, the public school system has donated masks. They donated thermometers so that we can test our our personnel each morning to make sure that they're still healthy to respond, and we're not spreading it out as we do our So, yeah, it's just, it's just an ever-changing scenario. You know, we've ordered equipment, we've got disinfectant coming, we, you know, we're doing everything we can to make the building safe. And that includes, you know, that includes police stations as well as the fire station and town hall. You know, and I just got to, you know, shout out and say thank you to Chief Llewellyn and to Deli for the work they've done with us on this and in in keeping us up and going
Okay, Ms. Nyman, any questions for Chief Duffy?
Nope, thank you, chief.
Rich, anything?
All right, no questions, no, thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
Oh, good to work at a daily briefing.
I bet. And Mr. Mullen?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Scott, I just, I just want to echo, you know, kind of what Mike said, obviously, you know, thank you for your efforts. I've noticed it, you know, I had, there was an incident in my neighborhood the other day, and you guys all came out, they all have their masks on. Same thing that I said to Chief, Chief Llewellyn, just continue to try to, you know, stay safe. Like you said, it's changing every single day, and there's more information coming out, and this is the new normal for the foreseeable future. So just stay healthy, stay safe.
Yeah, thanks, Mike, and you're right, it is the new normal. And, you know, I got to give a huge shout out and thanks to the to the firefighters because, you know, each conference call that I sit on or the deputy fire chief, Tom Heaney, sits on, you know, we're always coming up with with the new best practice. So we've been really changing the protocols on how they are operating, and they've taken it in stride, and they're taking it on a very serious level. They, you know, they know this isn't a joke, and they're ready for what's to come. So I have to say thank you to them and Deputy Heaney, who has been a driving force in implementing a lot of the changes that we're making.
Awesome. Thanks, Scott. Stay safe. All right, next on the agenda, Donna Shorto, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so just a brief update, Donna, as it pertains to the town election and town meeting.
Okay, legislation has been signed so that you can take a vote to move the town election. You can move it out as far as June 10th, because you need to allow, well, no, you can move it out as far as June 30th, but we will, we would have to announce it, we would have to make the public announcement 20 days before that, that it's going to be held. You also have the option of taking the vote to leave it open-ended. Legislation has been signed, they're still seeking it. Registration to vote will be open again before the actual date, but ballots that have already been set and the original warrant has already been set will stay in place. I would ask that you take a vote to postpone, and there I sent you a sample of the announcement that needs to be put with the warrant. We will still have to get the warrant posted, even though most of the places that we post are now closed to the public, but they allowed for that, they said that we can just post it on the building. The intention is that it's posted in these certain places, and the the announcement of the vote that you take will go with it so that people can see that, yes, this election is, we're still planning a town election, but at this point, it's going to be taken on this date or sometime in June or sometime in the in the future. You are not required to set a date. It, by law, is supposed to be done by the 30th of June. I don't know if they're going to change that. Everything changes in the blink of an eye. So that's where we stand right now, but because it's at this moment set for April 11th, you would need to take that vote so that we can post it. Once you take the vote, then we can post it. They made allowance in the legislation that everything that we have, you know, the ballots et cetera, will be able to be used, even though the date will change. They are suggesting that we encourage people to use absentee voting, early voting by mail, which is actually not something that we do for town elections, but they they wrote it into the legislation so that we would be able to service as many people as possible through the mail. Unfortunately, the law also says that we will have to have polling, polling places and hours available. So down the road, you don't have to take that vote tonight, but you can take a vote to move the polling place so that we could have one central location, say Town Hall, and that all precincts would vote in the same place. And you can also take a vote to shorten the hours. You have to have a minimum of four hours, and it has to start by noon time, so you could do noon time to four or 10 to two, or, so I'm asking that you consider that. That part doesn't have to be voted tonight, but I would ask that you take a vote to postpone the election.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, so for the board, before we, before we get into that, I just want to hear from Attorney Clifford, who is also on the call. John?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank Donna. Donna's been on top of this issue right from the beginning, anticipating that the April 11th election was going to be difficult, and now it's proven to be an impossibility. So we were on top of the legislation, tracking it. Donna was working closely with the Secretary of State's Office to stay up to date. So we do have legislation that allows the board to vote to move the election. Initially, it was thought that the legislation had required you to vote to postpone the election to a date certain, but Donna got guidance from the Secretary of State's Office that you can actually just vote to postpone this evening and then set a date once we have a little bit more information as to when it will be possible to hold an election. What's important for citizens to understand is that the incumbents will in fact serve until the next election. So everybody stays in office until the election occurs. The town meeting? The town meeting, obviously, that's probably going to have to be postponed as well. The question is going to be whether or not we can get town meeting in before June 30th and the fiscal year ends. So it's the same kind of situation, we don't really know what the end date of the current situation is going to be. So it's difficult to set a date certain beyond May 13th for the town meeting, but that's still out there. I think that's an action the board can take at some point.
Okay, well, I'd like to hear from, from the other board members. Mr. Penny, you're up.
So just my opinion at this point, we, you know, we think of voting to postpone, but we don't look to, to set a date. You know, both Donna and John hit on this, is it continues to be a moving target, so we don't know what ultimately is going to happen. So you could, it just, to postpone and we'll pick a date at a later time and then look to address the, the town meeting situation, get a little more information on that as well.
Kara?
I guess I have a question for John. Is this something that me and Michael Laughlin should abstain on since we are on the ballot?
No, you're not required to abstain on that.
Thank you, I agree with postponing it as well.
Mr. Mullen?
Just, just one question, sorry, Attorney Clifford. What would happen if we don't, if we don't have the opportunity before June 30th to have a town meeting? Then do we do the 112 budget? You know, I'll issue, or do you think there's a good chance, oh, you know, the law might be able to be changed again?
They're looking at legislation that would permit us to do that 112 budget process. I think people are hoping, wishing that June 30th will, will not be something that we're going to have to go beyond for something like this.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Ryan?
I'm pretty much set, everybody's doing a great job. I think we definitely have to postpone it. You know, when, when, that's another question altogether.
Okay, so, you know, my only, my concern, you know, and Chief Duffy messaged it to me as well, the shortening of the hours and the one central location, I think, kind of goes against the whole social distancing that we, that we're, you know, we're under the directive of. I'd be more, I think, interested in spreading it to more locations and having two precincts vote in three different buildings as opposed to, you know, one. And I know logistically that can be difficult, Donna, but I think from a community safety and a social distancing aspect, that would be, I think, more appropriate than, than the, the four hours in one location. But, you know, I, again, that's something that, that's voted on further down the line. I, I think, along with the rest of the, the members of the board, I, I think we should, I agree that we should move the, the election. I, I don't think the setting the date tonight would be necessarily appropriate. We don't know what the future holds, but I think definitely April 11th is, is off the table. Before I entertain a motion for that, though, Doug Lap?
Thank you, Mike, I just wanted to make one comment for you guys to think about. Attorney Clifford is also town council in East Bridgewater and they're obviously facing the exact same situation as we are. So I've been in touch, John helped put me in touch with their town manager and I know him well, we have a very good relationship, so we just need to coordinate because John obviously can't be in two different towns on the same night. So I, I think that East Bridgewater is tentatively looking at June 15th for a possible date for their town meeting. So I know you don't have to vote on a date tonight, but I maybe just want to throw out there for you to think about, maybe pencil it in, would be maybe the Monday after that, June 22nd. That would still give us a little bit of cushion, like a week before the end of the fiscal year and it wouldn't conflict with East Bridgewater, so we could make sure John would be there. So I just wanted to throw that out as a date maybe to pencil in potentially.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, being penciled in. In the meantime, I, I think, looking at maybe not setting a date tonight and just voting to move the election, so I will entertain a motion to move the election, to postpone the election to a, a later date.
I'll make a motion to, to move it to a later date and that date to be determined at a later time.
I got a motion from Rich, I got a second from Larry. All of us in favor, Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan? And myself, okay, so that's unanimous, so, so the April 11th election has been moved to a date to be determined in the future. Okay. Thank you, Donna, thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, a discussion of pending bill to allow the local option to delay the tax bill due date and waive interest fees. Judy, you still with us?
I am.
Judy, you're for?
This is a tough one. I just got information passed from the MCTA that the lobbyists for the MCTA have given us an, an update that let us know that they want to caution that the legislation is not final and is passing between the House and Senate as the two houses seek to achieve agreement on a single version of the bill. My first, my first thought is the fiduciary responsibility for the town. As much as be able to address potentially kicking the bills out or waiving any sort of fees, I would like to, I would like to, to, to put it out there that at least 80% of our income for real estate comes from an SBS grow agent. Those bills are already ready, set to go to come to the town of Rockland, so it's already kind of set in motion. It's difficult to take it on a case-by-case basis, it's not a black and white area. You can't say that we're, we're going to dispense of all penalties and/or interest. There, the, the, the bottom line is that it would definitely, definitely curtail and make a definite problem for the financial fiduciary revenues that come into the town on a regular basis for the town to run. I know it sounds extremely pragmatic, this is a very emotional time. We are certainly very much in tune to the needs of the people in, in our community. For the most part, I, I, I would caution that we would really need to take a very pragmatic look and that's not just me, it's, it's the entire financial group of us that would need to agree to take a hard look at how is this going to really fiscally affect the town of Rockland if we go that route. And I, and I think it's something definitely, that, that piece of it is definitely worth exploring.
Okay.
We have, currently, we have, our biggest motor vehicle commitment is almost completed. I looked at the, the outstanding bills, there's not that many. We have had extremely healthy activity on the online banking system. People are using it on a regular basis, I have, I've never seen such volumes before. So that commitment, which is our biggest one, is almost completed. The second commitment just went out for $283,000, which is due April 28th. And then, of course, we have our May 1 tax bills that are looming on the horizon as well. I, I would like to offer out to people that have, have kind of steered away from the online banking system because of the convenience fees. I would like to put it out there that they need to understand that if they use ACH, which is nothing simpler than writing a check, you just put in your routing number and your account number, it simply costs 35 cents to process that transaction. We have the availability of people to pay by phone, the availability of people to pay online, both on the water, sewer, and trash, as well as for the motor vehicle, exercise, and personal property. We have commitments, our water, sewer, and trash commitments are monthly. There's bills that go out on a monthly basis. Those revenues are, are steadily coming in. I have not seen really anything to think that forecasting-wise, there'll be a significant drop-off, but I, I, I would, I am very interested in, in following through with what this legislation, when they do, when it does come to fruition, what, what the, what the final bill will be. But for now, we're solvent, for now, we've been, I've been in the office every day. The mail, the mail slot is, is incredibly busy, it's full. People are dropping off, dropping it off in the mail, they're billing the mail slot and payments in the mail slot. They're also sending in building permits. Other, anything else that is necessary to continue in, in the, in the, in the vein without as much, as least disruption as we possibly can. Anything that's dropped off in the mail slot is then subsequently distributed to each department either by scan or personally delivered to their office just once they, they reach the mail slot. Anything that has time-sensitive things attached, like motor vehicle abatements, things that the assessors need to see that are, that are deadlines originated, those are scanned and sent to the assessors. So we've got, we've got a work in progress, it's working very nicely right now in connection with the different departments. And the mail slot is key. It's, it's kind of like the go-to for people and they've been utilizing it pretty frequently. And those that ask for receipts, because of people that typically come to our window, we are more than happy to stamp a receipt and send it back and mail it back to them that their, their payment has been received. So there's a lot of mail going out as well, letting people know to put their mind at ease that their payment did make it through and that everything is aesthetic as far as on a collecting side.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Before we, we go to questions specifically for Judy, you know, Judy brought up a good point, like the way in from, from other members of our financial team and I noticed Elizabeth here on, on the, the line with us. Elizabeth Zuleski, any, any comments from the accounting department?
From the accounting department, we did speak with the treasurer, Mr. Ellard and Mrs. Hodigan, and we went over our projections for the revenues. And the three of us are in agreement at this time that it would not be prudent to enter into a reduction of the interest and penalties. We're certainly compassionate with everything that's going on with all the, the other issues in town. But our biggest concern is our local receipts make up a lot of our funding that helps run the town side of government and if we reduce it, we're going to be looking at a minimum of $100,000 reduction in revenue coming in from that side of the world. A brief analysis that I did today shows our local receipts for March, we're still working much, but we believe majority of the revenues are in. Our tax rate, uh, income is down by 1%, which really isn't that bad. But our concern right now is our local receipts, which include interest and penalties, that's running approximately 10% below where it was last year. So that's, that's our concern, so we're trying to remain, as Judy said, the fiduciary responsibility to the community to ensure that we can actually continue with what we need to do. We're taking a very strict look at expenses and keeping our expenses limited other than payroll and trying to be as conservative as we can.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Larry, any questions?
No, but I, I would like to just say that I support your decision. I think it's prudent that we keep up with collections or whatever funds that we have coming our way because we don't want to let the town get so far behind that, that the recovery from it will be more than the, than the results of everything else, you know what I mean? I, I, I'm with you, well, Biz and all these, that's the way to go. I, I don't think that we should change all our fiscal policies just because, just because, that's, but you know, there's an awful lot of people in the world that live in the big cities that need those benefits more than people in Rockland or other towns that surround us and I think that our income will be just about the same. I don't think that there's enough people that are overwhelmed by it so far in Rockland. I, I could be wrong, but I think financially we have to stay solvent.
Thank you, Larry, Mr. Mullen?
Yeah, no, I just want to really echo that, I mean, I think, oh, you know, really Judy, oh, you know, everything that you've put in place in terms of the online bill pay, oh, you know, in terms of the Dropbox, oh, you know, oh, really has been huge. And, oh, and the, oh, really the degree to which, oh, you know, both those things and other things, including the mail, have been utilized extremely beneficial. Oh, you know, but I really do agree with everything that you mentioned, that Biz mentioned, and, oh, you know, that Larry just mentioned as well, at a point really where we're looking, like, at our entire revenue picture, like, can we really try to assess, you know, how our entire revenue picture, what that would be? Oh, you know, in the, excuse me, in potential for any type of head, oh, you know, to keep our local tax base, like, as strong as possible, oh, you know, so we can really meet and realize our projections that we have for this year is extremely important, so no, I agree with everything that you've mentioned.
Ms. Nyman?
I don't have anything right now, thank you.
Mr. Penny?
So I, I think in this area, I, I think we'd be prudent to continue to do what we're doing and not make changes, but take our lead from the state. So when and if legislation comes through, then at that point, we look at it. You know, obviously, you know, this whole financial picture from a local, state, and federal scenario is, is very daunting, but I think it would be in our best interest to wait, see what the state puts in direction, because what we don't know is at the end of the day, will there be some federal stimulus coming back to the state and actually trickle down to the town that would not only give the, the town some, some help, but also, you know, allow our, our residents and our taxpayers with, with some relief? So that would be my, my suggestion.
Thank you, Rich. And, you know, Rich, I, I definitely agree with you in that, on that point. You know, I, I think it's, you know, I, I think the impact has been felt by, by our local businesses and, and people that operate businesses within the town of Rockland and people that, that live in the town that operate businesses outside of Rockland that have been affected by this, particularly the restaurants and some of the other smaller businesses, nail salons, hair salons, stuff like that. So I, I think the financial burden is there, I, but I think that the thing that we have to remember and the thing that most important word that was used in this, the beginning of this discussion is that it's pending bill from the legislature right now. I don't think it'd be prudent on our part to vote on something that, that could still change, you know, whatever we voted on. I, I think this is something that, that we're going to continue to put on our agenda until we get the final version from the legislature and, and I think that that's, you know, again, it's our responsibility to, you know, protect the town's interests, but it's also our responsibility to protect our residents and, and serve them. But I think as far as making any kind of decision tonight before the bill is, is voted upon in the legislature, you know, I, I think, you know, maybe it will be a little bit premature on our part and, and I think we just table this for our next meeting. Judy, any final comments?
Um, I, I definitely agree with that and I, and I also, the way it is worded here, without reading the entire section, the tenets of the, the basic law that are in place, they use the word "may" expense. It's not a mandate, it's something that, right now, like, what you're saying is it's, it's a work in progress. They're not really quite sure. I think from any literature that I've read, it's, it's, it's still a moving target like anything else. No one has any definitive on any of this, whether it's health or fiscal or anything else. It's, it's just, it changes day by day. And it, it may mean that, your point is well-taken, that we don't, we don't, we, we can't make decisions with, without some semblance of definitive paperwork, legislation, something that gives us something solid. paperwork legislation, something that gives us something solid to go on. Um, and, and I think that that's probably the best route to go right now is to maintain status quo until otherwise we potentially make a change.
Thank you, Judy. Appreciate your work on that. Thanks for being with us today. All right. Uh, moving on, um, Jen, I saw that she has joined us. So, uh, we're going to go to HI Director Stacy Callahan and Assistant Town Minister Jen Constance for the impact on staffing and human resources.
Hey, everybody. Uh, Stacy Callahan, uh, Human Resources. So we have been working, um, leading right up to the, um, the, to the emergency declaration, with all of the department heads, which I can't thank enough for, uh, everybody working, um, so well together in such a fast-paced, quick decision-making timeframe. Everything was happening and changing, um, constantly. And, um, everybody, uh, although it was, you know, difficult and, um, and some anxiety building up and, you know, lots of, um, different feelings around, um, everything that's been going on. You know, I think as a whole, all of the employees, the department heads, senior management, have been really awesome, um, trying to get some policies, um, and procedures in place. So some of the things that we have worked on, um, there's a task force, um, meeting, uh, just about every week. And leading up to that, um, with all of the input from the department heads, we came up with, um, you know, what were the, um, primary, the priority responsibilities in each department? And, you know, who can, um, who can keep the business running from home? So once we identified, um, all of the criteria in the, um, the, the most important, um, everything's important, but the priorities such as payroll and, um, vendor checks and, um, you know, DPW. Once we identified what those tasks were and who could do them from home, working with the IT to get the laptops and everything in place, it ran pretty smoothly once we got to the point. I mean, it happened fast, but we're all home now and the business is still running and we're still moving forward. So just about, just so everybody knows too, where, um, everybody's still continuing to be paid. Everybody's working from home. Some people are coming to the office to get their task done. But it's, um, still usually one person per office, a couple of people in the building at the, at a time, if at most. So where we've, um, we've accomplished a lot in a short amount of time. We also met with, um, the union leadership to open a dialogue to make sure we're, you know, communicating with, um, with the union presidents. We have been working with Clifford and Kenny's office, um, frequently and often on policies and procedures that we will, um, that Jen will speak to more specifically, that will, will be moving forward to vote on or for the board of selectmen to vote, um, um, in the near future. But I'll let Jen speak to those. I think up to that, I think other than that, um, it's really, it's business as usual, but for home. So thank you, everybody, for your support and working, working well with each other. It's, it's, it's really actually another time. I know this is like a global, um, as opposed to specifically to Rockland, but once again, I think everyone steps up and works together. And I know I appreciate that.
Thank you, Stacy. Uh, Jen? Jen? Did we lose Jen?
Karen.
Can't hear you, Jen.
All right. A panel here.
In here.
Well.
Get Gino over there to, uh, get the microphone going.
I don't want to steal Jen's thunder if she can, if she figures it out, she can interrupt me. But basically in a lot, in a nutshell, um, there's a couple of policies, um, around telecommuting, the Emergency Family Leave Act, the, um, the, the new FCC IRA guidelines mandated, or that have come down from, um, the, the federal government that we're working on in Clifford and Kenny's office has been helping us, um, help us work through them. We still have some additional edits and there's, it's changing rapidly. We just got, um, John can even probably speak to this, but we just got the Emergency, um, Family Medical Leave Act tonight to go through. That's an addition to the Family Medical Leave Act. So we, we still have some work to do before we felt so, um, we should present, before we presented it tonight.
I don't know if Jen's got her microphone off mute yet.
She's off mute, but it's, she, we can't hear her. I can see her speaking, but there's no volume.
The, um, the policies Stacy mentioned and, and Jen and Stacy have been great to work with, but, um, like everyone else, we've never been in a situation like this. But basically there's been a couple of statutes passed federally that impact employee paid time off. And we understand that these were urgent for a lot of employees in different situations, which is why they, the legislation rushed through. But, um, it's creating a lot of confusion on every level as to how these benefits interplay with union contracts and other benefits that we already have. So it's, um, it's not easily negotiated. We pretty much have two associates who have been working full-time with the different communities trying to mesh the new laws with the policies. Typically, when the government adopts a new leave act, like Massachusetts adopted Sick Leave Act, it really doesn't impact municipalities because paid time off benefits are usually a little bit better than what's in the statute. In this case, they layered the new paid time off benefits on top of existing employee benefits. So it made it enormously complicated. But both Jen and Stacy have been great as, as, as well as a lot of our clients trying to grind our way through this and figure out how it all plays out.
Thank you, John. Okay. Uh, questions from the board. Uh, Mr. Mullen.
No, I don't have any at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Nyman.
I don't either. Thank you.
Mr. Penny.
I have no questions on this area.
Mr. Ryan.
Ditto. I'm a weird.
Okay. All right. I just want to, uh, I just want to thank both Jen and Stacy for all your hard work. I know, uh, I know we had you guys kind of switch on the fly a little bit last week, tried to get ahead of the governor's announcement that the buildings were going to be closing. Uh, and I appreciate the hard work that you guys put into it and identifying what the core services were to keep the town running, as well as, uh, what staff we needed to get that done with. So, you know, again, you know, kudos to you guys. Great job on that. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on. Uh, finally, you know, Doug, uh, I think this might be the least that you've talked in any meeting so far. We're going to go to you now for the impact on town operations and the budget.
This might be the most successful meeting of all of me talking the least, so.
We're saying it's not yet.
Yeah, right. And, and let me just add one thing, because I know if Jen's mic was working, she'd want to mention, uh, she's been coming, working on an idea that we just wanted to float by you to get your general impression, uh, before she took it any further. One of the allowable uses of Community Preservation Act funds is affordable housing. And given the economic downturn, how many people, you know, have been, uh, you know, losing their jobs or furloughed, et cetera. Uh, one of the ideas she's working on is potentially additional Community Preservation Act article that would have to be voted at town meeting that would provide a limited amount of funding or, uh, to subsidize people's rents that met some kind of economic threshold, some type of low income, um, whatever, however the threshold would be determined. But in, in a, that's in a nutshell, really simplified sort of the concept. But before, she really did more work kind of fleshing it out and talking to the Community Preservation Committee. Uh, we thought we'd just mention it to you all to see if from a policy perspective, it's something you supported or not, so that she didn't go too far down that hole. If it wasn't something you wanted to potentially consider. So I thought I'd throw that out there for some discussion.
Okay. Uh, Kara?
Um, I have no comment right now. Thank you.
Rich?
So I, you know, the, the CPA or CPC is, you know, designed to, to, to help in, you know, a couple of different areas. And one is, uh, from a housing perspective, I wouldn't, I'm not opposed to it. I think a couple of things that we'd have to make sure is, I know that those funds have to be used, you know, for specific, um, reasons and for things and that it has to meet the guidelines. So I think we want to make sure that, you know, what, what Jen's thought is, and I applaud her for, for, uh, for coming up with this idea. I think we want to make sure that the funds could be used, uh, for that type of scenario. And the other part is, um, I, I don't know exactly what we've got left, uh, for funds. I do know talking to Derek, um, with the projects that were already, uh, on board, uh, a lot of the money was used up. So we just want to make sure, uh, what we got for funds left. But I, I applaud the, um, the, the thought, uh, on that.
Mr. Ryan?
Uh, go for it, Jen. Great, great thinking. Great idea.
Thank you, Eric. Mike Mullen?
Uh, I also, I also think it's a great idea and a home run idea. Uh, you know, I mean, I, uh, this is the first time we're taking the comment for the balance of the open plate.
Mike, your, uh, your microphone.
No, someone just dialed in. I think it's because of that.
That was bad.
Go ahead, Mike. Say it again.
I know, I, no, I was just saying, I think it's a home run. I mean, especially, I mean, as Rich mentioned, if we could look, um, like at the balance of, you know, the housing piece, um, of the CPA, uh, you know, fund, uh, you know, and see when our balance is there and see how this could really work in it. Uh, you know, work within that. I think it's, oh, you know, I mean, that whole fund is paid for by, oh, you know, the residents and the taxpayers of Rockland. Um, and I think especially right now to, oh, you know, to have that fund really benefit, oh, you know, our families and our residents who really, um, have a pocket for that. I'll buy this whole prices. Um, I think it's an awesome idea. And I think Quincy, uh, you know, to be a Quincy with the CPA, uh, the CPC has been looking at doing, uh, 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 you know, a very similar thing, uh, you know. So I think if, uh, if Jen's able to pull together a fair, uh, able to pull it together between, uh, you know, in town meeting, uh, I can work with the CPC to be able to do it. Oh, you know, I think it could really be a huge help to folks.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, I agree with both, uh, both Mike and, uh, Rich. But before, uh, I go any further, Jen, I understand your microphone is fixed.
I am on the phone apparently.
Okay, there is a little bit of an echo of everything you're saying.
Is that any better?
Much better.
Okay. So I closed the video. I apologize. I have to, I have to share. Coming into this meeting, I thought, I'm actually looking forward to a video meeting. It's been so easy up until now. So I think I jinxed myself here. If I could back up for just a moment on the HR policies, I just want to, I have to echo, um, a thank you to, to all the staff and in particular Stacy. Every, Stacy has been working around the clock on HR policies. And I know she has open enrollment going on right now that she's trying to get underway. But everyone has been tremendously helpful, um, and it really has been a, a team effort, which has been a tremendous, um, help during this time, which is just unprecedented in the amount of work and the pace and the fluidity of it. So I want to thank everyone. But to answer a couple of questions on the CPA proposal, right now there is about eighty-six, eighty-seven thousand in the affordable housing bucket. And this is an allowable use, um, under CPA. In fact, it's been heavily endorsed by most of the affordable housing advocates. So CHAPA, Maha are all in support. The one piece that they're not necessarily, they're a little less supportive of is using it for homeowner, um, relief and more so for the rental. And it just, because it, it, if you did, went the homeowner route, it imposes some, um, issues that might run into some technicalities with using CPA funding. But with that said, I think we do have a fair amount of renters who would benefit from the, from the program. And it really is a multiplier. If we're helping a renter not be displaced from their home, we're also helping the landlord maintain a rental income, um, for their property. And then people have funds that they can use, especially as, as, you know, there is this financial crunch right now for so many households in other areas. And it just helps keep the local and, you know, realistically the larger economy moving. Just to give you a brief kind of summary, I did reach out to Wayne Darrow from COG, uh, Community Opportunities Group, and they would be interesting, interested in administering the program. We would need assistance with that piece. We just don't have the capacity, uh, to do it. It's something they do routinely. So it would, some of the, um, requirements would be that a household is at or below a hundred percent of the area median income. They're able to document a loss or reduction in their household's income as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Rental assistance should really not exceed the fair market rents as set by HUD for FY 2020. But those are pretty sizable. For example, a two-bedroom unit is, uh, two thousand three hundred eleven dollars. And to give you an idea on income, for a family of four, a hundred percent of the area median income would be a hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars. Or for another example, eighty percent of the area ma, median income for a family of four would be a little over ninety thousand. COG would administer, qualify the applicants, make the payments, which would go directly to the landlords and also market the program. So a lot, a lot of what they already do on the housing rehab side of things. I think I addressed all the questions on the program. Is there anything there that I missed?
Yeah, no, I, I think. I, I, I think you covered everything, Jen. Uh, you know, the, the other members, uh, seemed excited. I don't know if you were, you know, cutting in or out during that, but, but everybody seemed to, to be supportive of your efforts. Uh, you know, I certainly appreciate, uh, your outside the box kind of thinking on this. You know, obviously, the, the CPC is a, uh, uh, committee that has its own autonomy and any voting on use of funds would have to go, you know, obviously through their approval to be on a town meeting, you know, warrant. But, uh, you know, I, I certainly support your continued efforts on this. Uh, keep going with it. I think it's a great idea and anything we can do to help the residents rock this, this time. To your point, it, it's a multiplier, right? It, uh, it, it helps in a couple of different respects. And certainly would give us somewhat of a boost to the economy. So absolutely, keep going.
Great. And I, I could just mention briefly also, I did reach out to Derek Gilf from the CPC, who personally was in favor of it, um, and would bring it to his committee's attention. So I'll keep you posted on that front. But in, in speaking with Wayne Darrow, so another way that we are looking to help the, the business owners that have without question been heavily impacted is there is a similar program, um, using CDBG money. And we, um, have, he has reached out to DHCD already to see if there's a surplus, surplus of money that can be earmarked towards supporting local businesses via rental assistance. So the workaround would be that they'd be qualified as a micro enterprise and payments would go directly to landlords to lessen some of their financial burden on the business and help, um, you know, help their cash flow be redirected towards sustaining the business itself. So we'll keep you posted on that as well.
Sounds great, Jen. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, back to Doug.
Thank you very much. And I, I appreciate you letting us bring this up because again, we didn't want to pursue it if the board, you know, wasn't at least receptive to, to potentially pursuing it. So this gives us some good direction. Um, if I can just back up a little bit on the, on the impact on operations. So again, the, the progression that we've gone through was we had, um, we had an initial, you know, closing of just the senior center, uh, community center and library, uh, just based on those populations. That was, uh, some of the guidance we got. And then ultimately, you know, uh, we did need to close those buildings, um, not just for the public, but, but the, the most staff. Then we also looked at closing town hall to the public, which we did, but we still had all staff inside town hall working there. And then ultimately with the late, with the governor's emergency orders, um, we, we shut down all buildings, including town staff. So it's been what seems like a, a long. Um, so it's been what seems like a, a long time, you know, months and months. It's been just days and weeks. It seems like every single day, there's new information coming out. And you know, the, the wheels of town government generally move slowly. And so we've had to all adapt very quickly and it's, it's certainly been tough. Uh, a lot of what I was gonna say, uh, Stacy and Jen already highlighted, so I'll just generally say that everyone's still working and, uh, you know, some, uh, more efficiently than others, given the technology and the, and the nature of the work. Um, but I just want to highlight to you and the rest of the public that, uh, we are still doing our jobs. And in particular, we're trying to keep some of the real, everybody's had to reevaluate what their core functions are. For example, uh, at the senior center and, and the veterans agent, they're really focusing on providing meals, uh, to needy seniors and veterans. And they're, they're delivering those, they're getting that done. You know, we talked about it, that's collector's office, making sure that, you know, she's able to, to make it as easy as possible for taxpayers to pay, um, communicating that info, getting the papers to the bank, et cetera. Similarly, our building inspectors, you know, they're, they're trying to balance, uh, these measures that they need to take with the pandemic and not going into people's homes, but also making sure that they're protecting the public and inspecting work that really needs to be inspected. So I just want to state again for the public, we've, we've pushed this out via other methods, but I'll, I'll say it again now. Um, people can submit buil- building permit applications in the Dropbox on the left-hand side of Town Hall where they make their tax payments. They can put their building permit applications in there and they will get a call back or an email back and the building department will follow up and make arrangements for either delayed inspections or FaceTime, all, all different ways, you know, just trying to get the, their job done. Uh, you know, the accounting department is, is doing business a lot more than they've done in the past with digital signatures and scanned documents, uh, that used to be all original copies. The treasurer's office is making sure that payroll's going and vendor checks are going. So occasionally they have to come physically into Town Hall to get that done. But, uh, we're doing our best and I think we're doing a pretty good job of keeping, keeping our core services going. One thing I wanted to highlight along that note, uh, on behalf of the highway superintendent, Dave Taylor, um, he plans on paving Upper Union Street, uh, sooner than he had originally planned. Given the, the massive shutdown that the whole state and the country's facing now, it's actually an ideal time for him to, to do that paving work while some of the businesses are closed. So you will see Upper Union Street, uh, that work is allowed to be done and this is, will actually be lower cost. We were required police details and things like that. So in the coming weeks, we will see Upper Union Street work happen. Another thing I just wanted to comment kind of internally with some of our communications. You know, we started having a lot of different types of meetings in person before we really had to lock things down. So now we're doing them all, um, by Zoom as we are here. And we have a number of different things we're doing just to make sure we're all communicating. We have our COVID-19 past four weeks, once a week. Then we have other subgroup meetings that are meeting periodically as well as all department heads. Uh, so we're sharing a lot of information and making sure people are, are helping each other. And we're also redeploying staff, you know, if, if someone's not as easily able in a department to do their normal job from home remotely, but they could do some other limited work for another department, we're having them do that. And the unions and the department heads and staff have been, have been just great about that so far. I know Stacy and Jen mentioned this earlier, but we couldn't be doing any of this right now without the help of the IT department. It's sort of like police and fire where they have all their normal baseline work. They're responding to regular medical calls and police calls, but then they have all these additional COVID things. So Gino has all the normal tech support, all the normal network maintenance. On top of that, he's got to get, find a way to have all of us do work remotely and troubleshoot people's personal IT things and to make it work. I want to thank him publicly for that. We couldn't do it without him. Uh, maybe one last part I, I just want to highlight is boards and committees. So we're trying to put off as many board and committee meetings as we can until this all gets behind us. If there's an important meeting for a board or committee to have, they're gonna do just what we're doing now, do it on Zoom and it'll be recorded and available online for anybody to view in the future to make sure we're complying with open meeting law. If it's a, this is relatively easy, what we're doing right now. But if it's a regulatory board meeting, like the zoning board of appeals or the planning board, where there needs to be public input and public comment from a butters, then it gets a little more complicated. So for those meetings, they're gonna be posted on the agenda, the dial-in instructions, so a butters can participate. So that, that is gonna get a little trickier. One thing, but we are gonna do, we are gonna do that and we're gonna make sure we, we meet the letter of the law. We'll probably postpone a few hearings to get more time, but we'll make sure to do things properly. One thing related to that, that I, I would recommend you all vote tonight, is to require all boards and committees that, uh, need to receive any information from any applicants for any purpose, require all applicants to submit everything electronically going forward. That'll make it incredibly more efficient and a lot easier for us to be able to inform the public, get information online so the general public can see what's being asked, see what's being applied and comment as needed. If we get to traditional large pieces of paper, we just don't have the ability right now to safely and effectively get that done electronically. So that, that would be, um, probably my closing request on this general operational update would be to ask that you, uh, vote to require all boards, to require electronic submissions of documents, um, for all applications in the new public. Thank you.
All right. So I'll, I'll go to the board real quick. Uh, Rich, any comments on that?
Sorry, uh, no.
No problem. Okay. Kara?
No, thank you for all your hard work, Doug.
Mr. Mullen?
No, I don't have anything either. Thank you, Doug, for everything on this.
All right, Mr. Ryan?
We support you, Doug, one hundred percent. You're doing a great job, uh, all three administration is.
Okay, so, so with that being said, I'll entertain a motion, uh, that any, uh, requests be made electronically, uh, going forward.
Don't move.
Uh, first and a second, Doug?
Second?
Yep.
All right. I think I get two firsts and two seconds on that one. All right. I'll leave it in favor, uh, Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan? Right, okay, thanks. And myself, okay. That's unanimous. All right.
Thank you, Mike. Can I keep going on the budget next, if that's okay?
Yeah, are we jumping into old business on this? Or are we still on that last?
I still, I mean, to be honest, um, what we've already talked about with town meeting and what I was prepared to talk about on the budget essentially does blend into the old business. I had those two items as a separate item. So it's kind of one and the same.
So let's just leave it as is and just keep going with your presentation.
Great, thank you. So it's very interesting, you know, in addition to all the other, you know, state DPH calls and all the other regular updates that, that, uh, we've been getting, I'm also on a large, uh, group of South Shore town managers that are communicating weekly. Uh, and it's just been really interesting to see the progression of the updates and, and the information we've been sharing, you know, what started with, you know, what should we do? Because the governor, you know, put out very clear announcements, schools must close, or these businesses must close, etc. But they never told town governments what to do with their general government operations. And it's been very, very tricky. So we've been sharing a lot of information, making sure that we're all kind of on the same page and following that practice. And, and then it, then it kind of turned to, you know, what's the latest count? How many cases do you have in your town? How are you handling payroll? Things like, we've gone through that period and now we're at the phase where all the town managers are really, to be, to be frank, sort of freaking out a little bit, worried about the budget. And we're all worried about the current year, FY twenty, uh, given the local receipt, uh, that could very well decline, given the economic downturn. And then the most especially next year, FY twenty-one, all the work that all of us collectively in town, as well as in all the other towns have done preparing our FY twenty-one budgets, could potentially just have to be thrown out the window and we have to completely redo all our revenue assumptions. So there's been a lot of discussion, uh, amongst all of my peers, uh, about the budget. I know there's, uh, pending legislation, which, you know, Judy talked about earlier as it relates to, uh, you know, tax collections, but there's also a number of things pending in that bill that could affect, uh, potentially help how the towns are handling budgets in town meetings. So for example, uh, there could be allowances to allow us to hold a town meeting after June thirtieth. Um, the one-twelfth budget that Mike Mullen talked about, that there's additional language on that. Potentially allowing towns to use free cash after June thirtieth before the new free cash is certified, which normally you're not allowed to do. Uh, potentially allowing us to amortize any deficits associated with the pandemic over three years. Um, allowing us to continue revolving funds, even if we don't go to town meeting to reauthorize them. Um, and, uh, suspending the retiree, uh, hourly cap on the number of hours to, to allow more people to work. These are all things that are, that are currently being considered at the state level. But I, I just can't stress enough, I'm, I'm not gonna get into any numbers tonight, but I just want to raise the flag that we're all very worried. We, we have implemented a spending freeze, which I think I indicated to you earlier. Spending freeze, I mean, you know, we're still paying payroll and we're still fulfilling any other contractual obligations we have. But any other spending, uh, that can possibly be suspended or delayed, uh, we are, we are freezing in an effort to make sure that we end this year with a balanced budget without having to take any extreme measures. And I can say that essentially every other town in the South Shore, uh, is doing the same thing. Maybe just for you all to, to think about as we're going forward. Um, and again, every town is, you know, uh, on, on the same page with us. Everybody wants to avoid any potential layoffs in the future. That's not something anybody wants. And we're all gonna do everything we can, depending on how the numbers come in, uh, to be able to maintain the level of staffing that we have. And so some of the things that we're gonna start thinking about are potential uses of a reserve fund, potential different uses of our free cash, uh, potentially using some of our stabilization fund. Um, you know, these are all things that, that will need to be seriously considered and probably used to some degree, uh, to get us through this tough period of time. And I have been keeping in close contact with Dr. Cronin. I know that he's implemented a spending freeze, um, to the extent that he's able at the school department. They're under some tough situations there because the state's requiring them to continue spending on certain transportation services that they're not actually receiving because, because of the, uh, home orders. So, you know, these things are tough. But I just, I just wanted to highlight that we'll, there'll be more info to come. We're working very closely, you know, Biz and Judy and Deb and John are helping us, you know, look at the numbers, you know, the, the work and making sure that with all of our revenue. It's never been more important because we can't make decisions without good data. Uh, so we're, we're gonna be looking at that and in the coming weeks, um, as we get more information, we'll be coming back with, with different options to make sure we stay balanced in FY twenty and we're gonna have to come up with some new revenue assumptions for FY twenty-one. At every call with the state, every town manager keeps hammering Sean Cronin and others and the lieutenant governor saying, what are you gonna do about state aid? Are you gonna cut state aid? Are they gonna do C cuts? And, you know, they're, they won't commit and say no because they can't, because they're not sure where they're at. But the state has a large rainy day and then so we, we obviously hope that they dip into that to, to keep us whole. Um, but it's, to be honest, right now, I feel like we've, we've moved out of the phase of the crisis where we've adapted to working remotely. And I feel pretty good about that. And now I'm really focusing my attention more on the budget because that's what has me the most worried. And maybe the last part of that, uh, of this topic, I'll say, is, you know, working with both chiefs and Biz and Jen and Deli, we're working carefully on tracking any potentially eligible expenses that we're incurring, uh, to try to get reimbursement. Hopefully the federal government through MEMA will reimburse up to seventy-five percent uh, in the end of certain eligible expense. Um, and they seem to be mainly just very direct expenses, you know, equipment. For example, we did spend, I think up to twenty thousand dollars from a reserve fund transfer to buy an Arrowclave decontaminating unit and associated supplies to clean ambulances and other buildings that may get contaminated. That type of thing could be, uh, reimbursable at seventy-five percent. Um, but a lot of our staff time spent just dealing with things will likely not be. Uh, but we're gonna sort of carefully track that and get any potential reimbursement that we can possibly get. Uh, that's all I was really prepared to talk about now. It was mainly a kind of a warning, I guess. Um, I know Biz is here as well. She can certainly add anything in case I forgot, but o- other than that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Biz, would you like to add anything?
Uh, no, Doug covered that very well. That's what we've been discussing for the last couple of weeks. So he's doing a great job.
Thanks, Biz. Uh, Mr. Ryan, any questions?
So I just wanted to thank Doug, Jen and Biz for, uh, being here and, uh, you know, it's a heck of a place to, uh, start your first year in, in Rockland and be hammered one thing after another. And, uh, you know, baptism of fire, they, you know, we, we never knew what that meant as the song goes. You guys are in the middle of it and you're doing a great job and, and, uh, we would be definitely lost if we didn't have the three U's and the chiefs that we have and the, and the department heads to keep things going and, uh, running the way we are. I've actually made a personal attempt to call whoever's working during the day to say thank you to them, to the employees within the town hall to, um, let them know that we're thinking about them too and that, uh, we're concerned about and their families and everybody's health and, um, we're gonna do it. We've got a good team working together. Everybody's working hard together. Uh, Doug did, Ben and, uh, you get everybody, uh, you know, everybody's pulling on their roar at the right time. And, uh, that's a good thing. And, uh, we'll keep it up and, you know, like all tragedies, um, there'll be the peak and the, and the sad part and then they'll, uh, then the recovery will come. Hopefully the recovery won't be too tough. Um, recover from i- i- in a short period of time. Hopefully it doesn't drag on for a couple of years or something. It's gonna be tough.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Mullen, any questions or comments?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you, Doug. I know you're on top of everything. Oh, you know, are you in business with the budget and, oh, you know, what trying to predict where we're going with revenues is, uh, seemingly difficult at this point. So thank you for your effort.
Mr. Penny?
Uh, no, no comments at this time on this.
Ms. Nyman?
Nope. Just thank you to everyone for your hard work on this.
I, I just, I, I guess I have a, a quick question in regards to stabilization. Uh, Biz, what, do you know, I hate to put you on the spot, but off the top of your head, or Doug, maybe yourself, uh, what the current balance of the stabilization, uh, account is?
Uh, one million, seven hundred and fifty odd thousand.
Okay. All right. Sounds great. Thank you. All right. Uh, moving on, uh, town administrators, uh, report and correspondence. Doug?
No, I don't really have anything else. I just, you know, maybe let me just say publicly again, I, I appreciate the board recognizing, you know, Biz, Jen and I, because we are the newest. Um, but it's, I'm not just giving lip service, you know, this is really the truth. I mean, every, every single employee, every department head, every staff member is what's keeping us going. And I, I couldn't be prouder to be part of this organization. And I just want to say that so the public's aware of it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it. Okay, selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect, reflect the views of the board of selectmen and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullen?
Yeah, no, I just really want to, oh, you know, stop by piggybacking where we just left off. I mean, if you look, oh, if you look at the grid tonight and, oh my God, we look like the Brady Buns. But, um, at the end of the day, oh, you know, we're, oh, you know, oh, you know, we're Rockland. And, you know, we have, uh, oh, like we have each other's back, we have our residents back and, oh, you know, we all in our own way are getting through this. Oh, you know, really together, uh, like as Rockland always does from the chiefs. Oh, you know, at the Gino, I mean, what you've, um, had to pull together for all of our employees. Oh, oh, you know, like in very short order. Oh, you know, it's the Stacy and your efforts, you, oh, you know, trying to recalibrate, oh, you know, the whole way, uh, that the employees of the town have done business. Eventually forever, uh, to change that and work with John and Jamie. Oh, you know, and everyone like a president like Emmy to be able to, oh, you know, really adapt that and everything happens. It's incredible. So, oh, you know, I just really, and you and Deli for, oh, you know, for your efforts. I mean, you, oh, you know, as Mike mentioned earlier, you've been inundated this year. And, oh, you know, we're extremely proud to have you on board, like as our health agent and helping us to lead us through this sort of thing. So, um, at the end of the day, we're a Brady Buns, but we're really a Brady Buns. And, um, I just want to thank everyone for everything they do.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Uh, Ms. Nyman?
I think Mr. Mullen summed it up perfectly, but I as well just want to thank everyone for their hard work and coming together during this pandemic. I appreciate it and, um, great to see everyone and I hope everyone stays healthy and safe.
Thank you, Kara. Mr. Penny?
So first off, I, I, I want to say thank you to everybody. So first off, I, I, I want to say thank you to everybody, all the town employees. And there's too many to mention by name, but you know, from what the school has done uh with the lunches uh going out on a daily basis. Not only taking care of our kids, but even some adults uh to peg in the senior center and uh what they've been doing up there and getting the meals wheels, uh, meals on wheels out. Um, it just, you know, I've said this a number of times in regards to both our police and fire departments. Um, you know, these guys truly uh now more than ever on a daily basis uh are putting their, their health on the line and I truly appreciate that uh for the whole group. Uh, and, and back to the, you know, the leadership team with, with Doug and uh, and Jen and Biz and, and Stacy. Um, you know, how they have uh taken this and literally uh all, all the departments. Uh, Donner and, and uh staying up on top of things. Um, you know, John and, and um, uh, you know, everyone uh looking from a uh, uh, from a financial standpoint. So I just want to say thanks to everybody. Uh, really appreciate it and uh want everyone to stay safe out there.
Thank you, Rich. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Ryan?
Uh, ditto uh on all the above. Uh, everybody's doing a great job from top to bottom. Um, it's nice to uh hear everyone's voices. Uh, they'll let everybody know that uh pretty much all the town employees are working hard and they're safe and, and that we got a grip on the whole situation. I think that uh with all the doom and gloom that's there on this every day about how things driving to a halt, we'll be able to sit here, talk to people uh, are working toward goodness, common goal. And I, uh firstly, thank the fire chief for uh, for my wife's sake. They were up at the fire department, does a great job for you guys and and I know that uh, he's well taken care of. I think that uh, all across the whole town, one hundred percent of the employees appear to be standing up, being counted. And that's a great thing. Uh, unity as a group, as a town, um, could be a great thing. And uh, you know, let's, let's center with the, with the world hatred and, and, and who are helping each other. They save everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, so yeah, I, I'll be brief. Uh, you know, just reiterate what everybody else has said already. Uh, we pride ourselves in Rockland with having, having the best people in, in the right position to do the job. And I think we've reached, reached that, that goal that we, we've had for a while. Um, I specifically wanted every single member uh that's on this call to be on this call for, for a reason because you guys are the ones that I think uh, first of all, the, you know, the COVID nineteen is, is affecting the most uh your day to day as far as the operations are concerned. But also as far as communication to the residents, it's been one of this board's primary goals all along to increase the communication to the residents uh on, on every situation and increase the transparency uh so that people know what's going on. And in moments of, of global pandemic, national crises, uh, it's even more important. Um, you guys have all been available by phone at every time that I've called. Uh, Doug, your, your communication has been phenomenal throughout all of this. Uh, and I appreciate it going forward as well. You know, this, this, like I said, is, it's a global pandemic and, and it's bigger than, than us. It's, it's bigger than the town of Rockland and, and we really have no control over. But what we do have control over is, is communicating and looking out for each other and looking out for ourselves. Uh, and, and if we continue to do that, then I think uh we will get through this. Uh, we'll get through this and, and we'll come out of it better on the other end. Uh, so with that, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, uh, again, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and being with us. Uh, hopefully this uh, this video translates well uh to the viewing public and anybody that watches it later. Uh, but I do want to discuss briefly with the other members of the board, uh, a potential for a next meeting date. Uh, we were, we were scheduled initially to have a meeting. Uh, I believe it would be what next? Or actually it would have been, yeah, next Tuesday. Um, I, I, I think maybe we tentatively put that in there. Uh, unless there's nothing to go with and then, then we can back it up. But we, we do usually go with the first and third uh Tuesday of every month. Uh, this was kind of a meeting that we just, you know, jumped in there to the, the important nature of the uh, the subject matter. I imagine next week the subject matter will still be, you know, as important. So uh, so I'm thinking maybe, maybe we continue and do another meeting next week, just a quick update. Uh, and then, you know, we'll go back to our uh regular schedule. Uh, okay, the president of the board, as Larry likes to say. Mr. Ryan?
That works for me.
Mr. Mullen?
You know, I think that's like a great idea. I think this meeting was extremely helpful, but I also think uh keeping on the first and third is extremely helpful. But before I go any further, I've been dying to ask one night, does that read fun behind you?
It is. It is. Yeah. I uh, I'm standing in a China Foz Park in a lot as we speak. Big quotes. Uh, Ms. Nyman?
Sounds good to me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Penny?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Mike. I'm, I'm all in, bro.
Okay, Doug, that works for you and your team?
Yes, that works. Thank you for uh, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Uh, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna get the motion to adjourn.
A second.
I got a motion and a second. Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And myself, that's a yes. Again, thank you, everybody. Be safe, Rockland. Stay healthy. Good night.
Great.
Everybody, thanks. Good night now.